Good evening. Welcome to the April 19th, 2021 meeting of the Stillwater City Council. At this time, I will call this meeting to order, and I'll ask that you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a larger than, I guess, recently normal crowd here in the city council meeting room, not only spectators, but all five of the city councillors are here for the first time in a year, probably. It's nice to see everyone's face. First up tonight, under item three on the agenda, we are going to hear an introduction and presentation of an award-winning Washington Street corridor project by OSU Assistant Professor Bojang and former OSU Landscape Architecture students Jacob Kraft and Kyle Landon.
Good evening. It's my great honor to be here to talk about our student project as well as the community service project program. So, the Bachelor of Landscape Architecture program is the only accredited program in the state of Oklahoma. So, within this program, intend to enrich students' experiences at the same time service the community. So, we invented the program, it's called the Community Service Program. We bring public and private program to the classroom and help to enrich student learning experiences. So, the project we have done included many places in Oklahoma and outside, so including the Lindsay Mansion ground redevelopment project and the Stillwater Chinese Baptist Church ground project, which has been implemented. And also the Lindsay project, we did at the same time, and this turned in like a historical site in Lindsay, give them like a vision in the future. And recently, with the help of Stillwater planner Lance Gross and Ryan, so a group of our students involved in the Stillwater South Washington Street Improvement Project. And these two projects are submitted to a few professional committees and associations. So, one project done by Ryan Lembin won the American Planning Association Oklahoma State Chapter Outstanding Student Award. And the other project accomplished by Jacob Kraft has won the Oklahoma Chapter American Society of Landscape Architects Analysis and Planning Award. So, this evening, each of them will spend two minutes to introduce their project. I think they're on Zoom.
Yes, I can go first if that is all right. Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Kraft. I am going to share my screen real quick, just to run through quickly with this project, but also highlight some of the key components with this collaborative effort between the city of Stillwater and the OSU Landscape Architecture Program. So, this project that Kyle and I will be showcasing each individually encompasses South Washington Street located south of the university. And really, the background of this is an initial planning and analysis phase, which I will slide through real quick, that encompasses of understanding the current conditions of Stillwater's infrastructure and the site as well, providing a great opportunity for students to understand real tangible sites, constraints, municipal jurisdictions, and so forth. So, this was part one, of course, understanding components such as zoning, environmental conditions, transportation networks, and existing infrastructure components with a comprehensive review with some city planners who were so gracious to dedicate their time to work with our studio. And then, after, of course, running through weeks of design iteration, analysis, and planning, then yielding proposed designs, which offers this linkage between the students and their new ideas of what we're studying in University of Urban Design, Green Infrastructure, and coming up with tangible solutions for the municipality of Stillwater, and flashing up some general schematic overview of the proposed design, which I completed, as with additional students within our studio. And really, as I flip forward and highlight this, I really want to showcase the fact that this gives a real interesting and tangible look for the city, as well as the students of real-world design proposals, analyzing existing conditions through those analyses, which I just showcased earlier today, of understanding street scapes, certain dimensions, widths, access for pedestrian and bicycle circulation, as well as multimodal transportation, and then also accompanying with a visualization component of giving, you know, actual tangible visuals of what potentially Stillwater can be able to accomplish, incorporating bike lanes, green infrastructure, streetscape planting. But a lot of this I want to highlight is utilizing existing city resources and assets and enhancing them for an overall better vision for the streetscape of Stillwater and its other city components. So, that is what I have to share for my brief two minutes. So, thank you so much, and I will hand it off to Kyle to share his.
Evening, everyone. Let me share my screen quickly. All right, thank you so much, Jacob, for giving us that quick rundown of the analysis phase of the project and then your design as well. I'll just kind of quickly go through mine and kind of the way that we were thinking about this and approaching it, working with the city of Stillwater with the planning department with Ryan and Lance, it was fantastic. It was super helpful to us as students to kind of think more civic-mindedly and to really involve ourselves with kind of the real future planning goals and this kind of civic process happening in Stillwater and all the exciting progress and momentum kind of coming up in the future. This project specifically really looked at how we can connect infrastructure with recreation, kind of expanding the capacity and the conception of infrastructure into like the public realm, you know, are our streets just for kind of moving cars around, or are they really places that we spend time and kind of come together as a community even just in passing? So, this project really looked at using the existing landscape and the existing street network along with kind of the future proposed things like the, and kind of expanding the park system and such, south of Washington, and linking those things together with a green public realm. So, yeah, looking at alternative forms of transportation, such as biking, transit in Stillwater, you know, bus stops, and linking these things together into kind of one cohesive network. And like I said before, it was really wonderful to work with the city of Stillwater on a real project, and we did others throughout school as well. It's really fantastic for us to kind of be involved in the community. Stillwater gives us such a wonderful place to go to school, a really place that we really get to thrive and have such a great learning environment, and it's wonderful, especially in our later years there, to really think how we can give back to the city and the town, and how we can kind of further this wonderful community for the students in the future. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, like, we expect like more projects from the city, so which can come to our classroom. So, the project like brought up here, like increased the excitement in the classroom, and also like reduced like service for other cities as well. Like, I do have to stress, like, we charge a little fee for the service, so no penny goes to the faculty pocket, so everything goes to the program for our books, travel, printing, and those. And again, thank you for your financial support and as well as the real project experience and the excitement you truly bring to the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Professor. Thank you, Jacob and Kyle, for the work of you all and your teams in these projects. They're excellent to see, and I always love to see the collaboration between our city staff and OSU students and faculty on projects like this. Okay, I am going to mix up the agenda just slightly. Before we go to 3B, I'm going to jump down and do four, the consent docket, get this little bit of business out of the way. So, item four is the consent docket. There are a few things, including special, excuse me, meeting minutes, right-of-way agreement, and some other easement sorts of things. Councillors, is there a question, a comment, or a motion on the consent docket?
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Darlington and a second from Councillor Jaloski. Oh, wow, wait, we can vote with our buttons?
No.
No?
I tried.
I tried, but...
I'm looking forward to that so much.
What a roller coaster the last three seconds.
Unfortunately, Teresa, you'll have to call the roll again.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. All right, we'll go back up now to item 3B, which is proclamation and some words honoring Vice Mayor Pat Darlington on her final meeting as a member of the Stillwater City Council here this evening. I do have a proclamation, and then I'll say a couple of things, and we have a little plaque here for you, and then I'll let Vice Mayor Darlington say a few words.
Okay. You knew I would have a few words.
I'm...
Okay.
I would be disappointed if you didn't. Whereas Patricia Pat Darlington was first elected Stillwater City Councillor in April 2014 and selected Vice Mayor by her fellow councillors the following year. And whereas Vice Mayor Darlington previously served the community as a member of the Stillwater Board of Education, the Stillwater Interfaith Alliance, Habitat for Humanity Board, and the Stillwater Public Library Board, and whereas during Vice Mayor Darlington's tenure, the city opened the Stillwater Energy Center, completed Phase Two of the Water 2040 Project, commenced daily commercial passenger air service at the Stillwater Regional Airport, implemented form-based land development in the corridor redevelopment area, established tax increment financing districts two, three, and four, and hired city manager Norman McNichol. And whereas Vice Mayor Darlington advocated broad citizen participation and transparency in government, resulting in the creation of several citizen task forces and development of electronic communication platforms that provide citizens with enhanced access to public information, records, and tools to express views about ongoing public issues. And whereas Vice Mayor Darlington championed strong neighborhoods and sustainable development, and has challenged city administration to find ways to utilize forward-thinking practices and technologies. And whereas Vice Mayor Darlington has gained national recognition for her efforts to locate a regional mental health facility in Stillwater, thereby addressing a critical need for the community while saving taxpayers thousands of dollars in transportation and personnel costs. And whereas the dedication and tireless efforts of Vice Mayor Darlington on behalf of the citizens of Stillwater will long be remembered and will serve as a model for all who follow her in this endeavor. Now, therefore, we, the Stillwater City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Stillwater, hereby recognize and express our appreciation for the dedication to duty and service performed by Vice Mayor Pat Darlington. I'm going to give you that.
Thank you.
I'm going to present you with this.
Awesome. Thank you.
Memorial or marker. And I will, I will say, most of what, all of us, although I'm happy to have the rest of the councillors chime in here, I think this expresses in somewhat comprehensive form, your contributions as your time on the city council, but in seven years on the council, which, by the way, is the longest-serving city councillor, I think, I couldn't tell from complete records, but I think in a long, long, long time, because we passed longer-term limits while you were here as well, so I don't think we've had somebody serve more than six years in maybe forever. And this does a decent job of explaining how much you've contributed in that seven years, but certainly can't do all of it. And I think, for me, all of you out there who are interested in public service and who want to know what it looks like to be a community activist, someone who's engaged, Pat Darlington is the model you should look to for how to do that. Someone who has expressed her opinions, has been dogged in her approach to forward the values that she cares about, but is also wonderful to work with, someone who communicates well and puts her money where her mouth is in getting involved in these activities and being a leader in our community. So, thank you, Pat, for your years of service toward city, and for me personally, for the example that you've set for all of us in how to be a wonderful public servant.
Thank you, Will, very much.
You might need to turn your mic on. Maybe not.
Put the lights on. My overwhelming feeling right now is almost speechlessness, but you wouldn't really believe that. My overwhelming feeling is gratitude. First of all, to the citizens who supported me in this position from the very beginning, to the good people that I've served on council with in the past, John Bartley, Joe Weaver, Miguel Nahara, and Gina Noble, to our city manager Norman McNichol, and our good city administrators, and all of the staff, 672, right? Thank you very much. As a councillor, I've learned more than I ever thought possible in these seven years. At one time, I thought, in the beginning, that the city could and should do everything. That is not possible. Streets, sewers, parks, utilities, neighborhoods, zoning, et cetera, et cetera. That is really an impossible task. It takes many good partnerships with other of the large entities in Stillwater, and especially with interested and engaged citizens. And over the seven years that I've been on council, I have seen both of those groups grow and become much stronger partnerships, and that has been really encouraging. As a councillor also, I've come to love Stillwater more than ever. I have every confidence that this council, with the addition of Christie, will continue to discover, welcome, and reinforce innovation, and recognize that a street is not just a street, utilities are not just utilities, a park isn't just a place to set up play equipment, zoning is not just about where things are or are not built. Instead, every piece of infrastructure, every plan, every idea designed, built, and maintained with intention increases the possibility for having not only a good city, but a great community. I have inexpressible, special gratitude to the wonderful people at this horseshoe. Elaine, Amy, John, Will, your thoughtfulness, leadership, integrity, and passion for Stillwater, our gifts to Stillwater. Your friendship has been a gift to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Now, somewhat unceremoniously, that's the end of your duties here tonight.
I'm done. That's why I had to say something.
We'll see you, I'm sure, very soon.
Perhaps.
Vice Mayor Darlington will continue to serve on the Renewable Energy Task Force, and I'm sure in many other capacities in the community, and we welcome you back here for public comment at any point, as long as you keep it to three minutes.
Did I make it that time? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat.
Good luck to you.
Speaking of, that brings us to item five on the agenda, which is the swearing-in of councillor-elect Christie Hawkins. At this time, Teresa will administer the oath of office.
I will swear you in if you want to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christie Hawkins, do solemnly swear.
I, Christie Hawkins, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the state of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly.
And I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear that I will faithfully discharge.
I further swear that I will faithfully discharge.
My duties of the office.
My duties of the office.
Of City of Stillwater Councillor.
Of City of Stillwater Councillor.
Feet number four.
Feet number four.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome, Councillor Hawkins.
Thank you.
Just like the presidential inauguration, you sit down at the desk first thing and start voting on stuff. The inaugural balls come later, I think, right? Do we still do this? Is it COVID? All right. We are now at item seven on, no, item six on the agenda, the election of a new Vice Mayor. Councillors, are there any nominations for a new Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I would like to nominate Councillor Zanotti.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Elaine Zanotti as the new Vice Mayor. Teresa, can you please call the roll? I'm not even going to give you a chance to object. I guess you can vote no if you want.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Councillor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councillor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councillor Jaloski?
Yes.
Councillor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Elaine Zanotti is appointed the new Vice Mayor of the city of Stillwater. All right, I'm going to leave. You're up. Never mind, I'll stick around. Okay. Item seven, public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I think we do have somebody signed up to speak in person, but I don't see Mr. Ghost. Is he on Zoom? Okay. Roger, are you on, are you out there on Zoom somewhere? Speak now or forever hold your peace. All right. We will move on to item eight, items removed from consent. We don't have any of those. So, item nine, public hearings. Item 9A has received public comment regarding the proposed operating budget for the city of Stillwater fiscal year 2022-2023. Christie Cluck.
Yes, good evening, Christie Cluck, Finance Director. So, attached to the agenda packet this evening is the proposed budget for fiscal year 22, and this is the same budget that was presented to council on March 22nd. There have been a few minimal adjustments to the budget since that time, some adjustments to some personnel accounts, and then the removal of two capital items which are currently appropriated in fiscal year 21. So, that overall adjustment is about $150,000 reduction. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councillors, any questions for Christie? Mr. Dorman, do we have good notice of the public hearing on this item? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. I don't see anyone here sign up to speak on this issue, and so I will close the public hearing. Christie, is there, what's the next step for us?
So, I have two alternatives. One is to direct staff to incorporate any changes that you may have this evening, and then we would bring that back for your consideration and review at the May 3 meeting. The second alternative would just be to direct staff to proceed with the budget adoption process, and so we would bring the resolution back at the May 17 meeting.
I don't think there's any changes to incorporate, so we look forward to the next step. Mr. Ghost, would you still like to provide public comment under item seven on the agenda? Am I going to get in trouble for letting you? You're on the agenda. We're all really careful now because of what happened in Normal.
It happened down south. Thank you, and sorry I was late. I was planning on being under the general orders, but what I'd like to address is the, imagine this, the five-year transportation plan. Part of my concern is, this hasn't been vetted in public, except tonight it's on the agenda for five-year transportation plan with a whole bunch of projects for next year. Part of your strategic priority is to ensure citizens are informed and active, have citizen feedback. I don't believe this has happened on this five-year project. I got caught two years ago asleep at the wheel, and there were some projects approved that I think we should have had further discussion about, and so this hasn't been out. I also think the report is missing reference to the strategic priority number six, which is civic engagement. And if just sending this packet out on Thursday with this five-year plan in the back is civic engagement, I think we got going the wrong way on that. As far as I understand, the city needs to get a five-year, we'll get the budget for fiscal '21 approved, so that's not a quick process to get that going. And I've had good discussions with Monty about the projects on there, the ones I had questions about. I still have a question about Western from 19th to 32nd. You've got 500 and some odd houses getting ready to go in just east of Western from 26th to 32nd. That project is a one-inch mill and a two-inch overlay. Pretty sure, you know, there should be some turn lanes, there's things that need to happen on Western besides just milling overlay to accommodate or accommodate the development. So, a question, I was paying like $411,000 to do that right now, but it needs to be looked at. But, you know, four days or three days to look at this, not enough time to even get it discussed, so. And then, in the next three or four years, and I'm going to ask for a little extra time, Mayor, the next four years, there are projects listed and money listed, and I've been told in the past when I question the project, that was approved at council meeting, so it's done. So, it looks to me like if you approve this, any new council... So it looks to me like if you approve this, any new council will, you know, we've already got the plan for five years, so that's sort of the way I read it, and I'd really ask for more public discussion of these things in the future. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Roger. We'll talk some more about that coming up and a couple items on the agenda. But next up is item 10A, which is our quarterly financial report, again from Kristi Kluck.
All right, so on the agenda this evening is the review of the third quarter financial report. As of the end of the third quarter, revenues and expenditures were generally on target when taking into account one-time amounts and cyclical activities such as capital expenditures, debt service payments, and one-time grant receipts, as well as taking into account the budget amendments that the council and the trustees approved back in February and March. In looking at our major revenue sources, the first being sales tax, we are on track at 75% of budget. Use tax is coming in above projection at 97% of budget, and then sales and use tax together are at 77% of budget. The utility sales are the major revenue source for the SUA, and collectively, those are at 78% of budget. Operating and maintenance expenditures across all funds are at about 70% of budget. And then when looking in at our capital expenditures across all the funds, we're at about 27% of the budget. So those expenditures are not typically going to be spread evenly over the course of the fiscal year, and that's just because those capital projects are going to be at varying stages of the procurement process, and so that's to be expected. And those phases of the procurement process are projects out to bid, items on order, projects under design and under construction, and then finally the completion phase. So there are nearly 150 projects at various phases of that procurement process, and there is more detail on that on pages 13 through 17 of the quarterly report, and then that can also be found on the city's website under current projects. And I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kristi. Doesn't sound like we have any questions.
Okay.
That's good to hear that revenues are on track and that expenses are a little bit under, so.
Yes.
We're going to still have a balanced budget.
We are in good shape.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Item 10B, approved purchase of computer-aided dispatch and police records management software from Central Square and authorize the total project expenditure not to increase, not to exceed $188,000. This is Erin Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. I'm Erin Kelly, Public Safety Systems Administrator in the Department of Information Technology. I am here tonight to seek authorization to purchase a upgrade to our CAD and police records management software. The current system was purchased in FY 0910 from Public Safety Systems Incorporated. We paid just over $712,000 for that software upfront cost, and then since that time, we paid a little over $1.1 million in ongoing maintenance. The SSI was purchased in 2017 by another public safety software company called Tri-Tech, and in 2018, Tri-Tech merged with two other public sector software companies, and Central Square was formed. The end result of this merger is that our current system is only being maintained for bug fixes. There will be no new development on the current software and no upgrades in functionality. The current software relies on older technology, which as time and technology advance, it will be more difficult to maintain. The current software supports 911 dispatch for both police and fire, police records management, as well as jail administration. We were contacted by Central Square about upgrading our software to their Public Safety Pro Suite. The software is subscription-based. Because it's subscription-based, there is not upfront capital costs, and we would see a minimal increase in our annual operating expenditures. The design solution is a fully redundant system. This means that we would have part of the system housed at our information and technology data center upstairs, as well as the disaster recovery data center across town. Central Square would provide overall system management by remote monitoring. They would replace any hardware and servers that needed to be replaced, and they would continue to provide ongoing software maintenance. The price provided by the vendor is an all-encompassing price that does include all of the server hardware for the initial purchase, the ongoing maintenance, any travel, training, data migration costs, implementation of the project, and software licensing. Some of the functionality that we would see with the new software would include online crime reporting for citizens, online crime mapping, a paperless reporting workflow, which we don't have today, as well as custom modules and forms for future expandability. The cost for maintaining our current system in the upcoming budget year is going to be Making the upgrade would cost $188,000. This is an $81,000 increase in FY '21-'22 operating budget. The subscription price is set for the first five years, and beginning in year number six, we would begin to see 5% annual increases in cost. The funding is included in FY '21-'22 budget. Questions?
Counselors? Erin, with subscription software, one of the problems sometimes can be the propriety of the data that you get back out, proprietary systems. Is this, would there be any problem in the future if we want to switch to a different system with being able to get our data out of this system and move it somewhere else?
No, we would still own the data.
Are there, were there any, are there any other alternatives, I mean, other than either keeping the system we have or going to this one?
There are other alternatives. We really just consider this as an upgrade, and so keeping in line with the current vendor that we already have, we didn't pursue other options because, again, this is an upgrade, and I think we would save a substantial amount of money by just doing the upgrade and not having to go purchase new software outright.
Replace the whole system.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
And $188,000 initial upfront cost includes all the hardware that's required for implementation.
That's correct, yes.
Well, what's your recommendation?
My recommendation is a motion to approve the purchase of computer-aided dispatch and police records management software from Central Square and authorize total project expenditures not to exceed $188,000.
Thank you, Erin. Counselors, further discussion? Is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation. Teresa, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski.
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that item is approved. Thank you, Erin. Item 10C, approve of bid recommendation for the award of contract for the fiscal year 20 pavement management thin-service overlay construction to Vance Brothers in the amount of $231,178.37. Mr. Carnes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Monty Carnes, Director of City Engineering. Part of the fiscal year 20 pavement management program includes what we refer to as micro-surfacing, and we have bid that project. We had one bidder, Vance Brothers. Their bid was for $304,502.93. We're asking that you approve that bid and also another 15% for contingency, which takes us to $350,178.37. And you have previously appropriated money for the pavement management project, so there's no need for a budget amendment. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Monty. Do you know which, I can't remember in fiscal year 20 which thin-service overlay stuff is happening.
I'm sorry?
Which projects are under thin-service overlay in 20?
In fiscal year 20?
Yeah.
I would have to go back and check, and I'll be happy to get those to you. I know that we're going to overlay Duck Street from Six to Boomer, and those projects have been close to going out. That's the major one. We're rebuilding Seventh Avenue between Main and Lewis, also Harne and Park out in the industrial area, and Monticello on the west part of campus. Those are our major projects for reconstruction.
Okay. But that's not, that's not these thin-service project? That's not the thin-service projects we're talking about with this bid?
No. This is just specifically, these particular, I'm sorry, these streets, we will do Boomer from McElroy to Lakeview and Hall of Fame from Knoblock to Duck.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Counselors, further questions?
Monty, is it common for us just to have one bidder on this type of work?
We normally have two bidders, and Vance is historically the low of the two bidders.
Anything further, or is there a motion on this item, Council?
Motion to award the contract to email not to exceed $300,178.37 to Vance Brothers Incorporated and authorize the Miami Design Complex.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake.
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski.
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that contract is awarded. Monty, next up, we have 10D, approve of the five-year transportation plan.
So we have two items very closely related. We want to talk about the five-year plan. I have to apologize for the wording, some of the wording in the report. We do not normally ask for you to approve the five-year plan. It's presented to you as information. Obviously, you can't approve the allocation of the funds because we don't know what those funds will be. And I'll discuss a little more about that later, why we include the funds on that basis. We do prepare the rolling five-year plan so that we have some kind of an idea of what's coming, and we can give that to the public. It serves as a guide for both us and for staff and the public. It's heavily influenced by our pavement management index ratings and how those go about. Other factors that enter into it is the actual deterioration of the street since the assessment and from one year to the next, traffic counts, and partnering with other governmental agencies. We do things with OSU, we do things with county, and we have to be recognized their funding limitations as well as ours and matching those, and of course, public input. A quick review of what pavement management is. We match the appropriate maintenance repair technique to the pavement condition for the greatest increase in useful pavement life at the optimal cost. We've seen this slide many times. Pavements will normally deteriorate on a line something like this, where the x-axis is the age of the pavement, the y-axis is the condition. If we come along somewhere while the pavement is still in good, excellent condition and spend a little bit of money, we can keep it in that condition for a few more years, and then we spend a little bit more money and extend it a little bit more and extend it out, drastically increasing the life of the pavement and also the quality of the pavement and also our dollars. This from, on the y-axis, from here to here represents a great deal of cost, kind of proportional to this small amount. We'll discuss that more later as well. So what's the first thing you have to do is you have to determine the quantity of something you have, and this is pavement management is also asset management. How much of the asset do you have? In our case, we have over 450 lane miles of streets, and then you have to assess the quality. We began that about 15 years ago, retained the service of infrastructure management services. They've driven every street and every block and given us a rating, starting 15 years ago, and about every five years, that's updated, and that's a picture of one of the vehicles they use. In 2017, the rankings were the locals range from 39 to 97. If you're curious as to what the 39 is, that's Monticello that we're reconstructing. Collectors were 47 to 97. Arterials range from 53 to 97. In 2012, the average was 74. Five years later, the average had dropped to 70. After the current fiscal year 20 program, we project the arterials to have an average of 82, the collector 74, the local 64, and the system average to be 69. It appears that over the last few years, the way we're doing things, that we're slowing the rate of deterioration, but we're still losing a little bit of ground. We really won't know the answer to that until we do the next analysis in 2022, because part, these are projected numbers, and the software we use assumes a rate of deterioration on the streets, then it has to be verified. How do we do it? We accumulate funds for a particular fiscal year and then construct in the next. So right now, in fiscal year 21, we're just now spending the funds that we collected in fiscal year 20. A year from now, we'll come and discuss fiscal year 22 funds. The, that's one of the reasons your fund balances looks the largest, because we accumulate those monies, and then it takes time for us to spend them. Some of the tools that we have in the bag, we try to keep the cracks sealed, particularly on new streets, and that's one of the ways we really spend a little bit of money and extend them. We do micro-surfacing. We do surface treatments, which is a new technique, we'll talk about more in a minute. We do diamond grinding now and also dial joint retrofit. That's a technique you've seen on the interstate highways where they come back in, cut in dial bars, and then grind the street. We're getting ready to do that on McElroy instead of having to reconstruct that entire street. Of course, the traditional asphalt melon overlay, full-depth repairs in various locations where, you know, we identify if we do a little bit now, that helps us, and then, of course, full reconstruction, like we're doing on some of our streets. To give you an idea of how we use the software, if you look, this is Hall of Fame, and it's basically between Monroe and Washington. If you look particularly at this segment, you see that the pavement condition overall looks pretty good, the dynamic condition looks good, the deflection looks good, but the service condition is pretty poor. And you also, when you look at, if we looked at just that block, and we looked at the averages, we'd say, well, that looks pretty good, but when you start looking at the standard deviation, man, you start seeing some pretty wide variations. So that means we need to take a look and see what's going on in that area, and maybe there's a spot repair we can do, which is a lot of times we do the full-depth repair with. So the, the plan as we envision it right now. We, like I said, we do that on a five-year look ahead. The funding allocation is just to, to give you an idea of what, where we're looking at priorities. Back to the arterial collectors and residential. We've talked about this a couple of years ago. That if we, if we get the arterials and collectors up to good condition, we can keep them in good condition. And those are the streets that the public uses the most often and the best to see. So we've, we've been hitting those harder than we have the residential streets for a few years. And in about fiscal year 24, that flips. We think we'll have the arterials and collectors in pretty good shape. Hopefully, we'll be able to keep them in good shape and then we can start dedicating more of the resources to the local streets. And that's kind of what this sheet is intended to show you, how, how we look, look at that. So for fiscal year 2025 right now, the thought is we'll be working, continuing some work kind of in the southeast part of the community. There aren't a lot of folks down in there, but the streets are beginning to show a lot of wear and tear. This is Western. This is 26th. Main Street, Perkins. This is 26th Avenue. You know, we'd be proposing to overlay it, do some work on that and finish up some work on the streets in this area as well. Those are the major thoughts for 25, 24. Again, starting to look in, in that southeast area, reconstructing some streets. We're also looking at doing King Street from 6th North to University in that period of time. Micro-surfacing, we'll be looking at maybe doing Western in this area. Western, of course, is on our, our transportation enhancement plan to be reconstructed. And if, if that project were to happen, of course, we wouldn't do this project. We'd spend those dollars somewhere else. Some of the other highlights, we'll be diamond grinding over in this area. On Stoller, it'd be some on Third between Hester and Main. And then Third between Berry and Stoller. Melon overlay would be looking at Ninth Street in fiscal year 24 money. Getting a little closer into fiscal 23 money. Would be looking at doing Hall of Fame between Monroe and Washington, that section I was just looking at. That would be a joint project with OSU. And right now, that's, that's kind of when they think they might have the money for that. Sunrise between Manning and Skyline, we would be reconstructing those areas. Diamond grinding again, continuing that. Husband Hartman to Franklin. Miller between Main and Lowry. Virginia between Lowry and Jardoe. We'd also be looking at melon overlay in Jardoe from McElroy up to Lakeview. Those, the, the further out we are, the less certain. Those are just ideas that we have. Fiscal year 22, we start getting a little closer to what actually might be happening. So in fiscal year 22, we'd like to redo Third from Perkins going east. And by that time, we hope to have had the bridge rebuilt. We're planning on advertising that project in May or June and start construction on that later this year. And that would be the bridge west of Perkins over East Bimmer Creek. Micro-surfacing, we'd be looking at Seventh Avenue between Duck and Main. Eighth between Duck and Lewis. Ninth between Duck and Lewis. And then Lowry between 12th and 6th, which of those would be streets downtown, obviously. Range Road would be a major project that we would be looking at during that period of time. And that's off the map over here. That would be a project we would do with the county. And right now, conversations I've had with the county, they think they'll be in a position to do that during the summer of 23, which is about two years from now. So we would put that in next year's plan to begin designing and that'd be a joint project. And our thought is that we would do that similar to what they have done with Country Club north of Lakeview and then Lakeview west of Country Club. Really appears to be really nice work and good, a good use of dollars. They come in and grind up the concrete, I mean, the existing asphalt, add some cement and overlay it. And we'd work out the funding split on that.
Hey, Monty, I apologize, I don't mean to interrupt you.
No, I'm actually.
When was the last time these maps were changed? The reason I ask is because these maps don't match up with what was presented there. The fiscal year 22 and 23 maps specifically. They kind of match up, but they're in different timeframes, different years.
Well, I apologize for that. They should have, they should have matched and that, we may have missed that in our quality control review.
They don't match with what was presented up there. Just time, I mean, so if, if you pull up the fiscal year 2022, for example, Monty, if you don't mind.
I'd be glad to. If I can figure this out.
That's on the 2023 plan there.
Okay.
I just want to, I just want to make sure which one is correct, basically. So that's the 2022, which does not include the Sanger Ridge Melon Overlay 22 on there.
That's Range. It's just not, it's too far. He's got, his map is zoomed in.
We're talking about Range Road, which is a mile west of Sanger.
Okay.
And it's on this map.
So it's not, it's not on his.
Okay.
Yeah.
Was that the only concern?
Yeah, I think so. Pull 2023 up again real quick. Yeah, looks like it. Okay.
What, what is that red line on that one? The red on the left?
All the way southeast, southwest.
That's the one right here we're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. And that could be your confusion, that is Range.
Okay. So it shows up on the 23 instead of 22?
That, that one is, that one should be in 22.
In 22.
And originally, originally it had been and we, we.
Moved it just to take it off the 23? Okay.
And in the paper map here that I've got, it's zoomed in more, so I can't see Range on this map.
Yeah. Okay. Sorry, I was being OCD. Didn't match up in my, in my brain, so.
That was appropriate time because we're at the questions and comments and concerns for the plan.
Questions for Monty on the five-year maintenance plan?
I don't have questions, but I, I, I just wanted to let Monty know that in the last five years that I've been on council, I have learned about roads more than I had, had thought I would. I now know of arterial, I now know of pleather, I know of a different type of road. But I wanted to address Mr. Goose making a note that this council has been very little about trying to be transparent. And I have so appreciated the reports and your explanation of why you decide to do the roads you do. And it's not that we don't necessarily want input from individuals. It's just that this is a little bit different than what is your thoughts on what road needs to be built? Because we get those emails all the time. Please fix my, you know, road. So I'm hoping there's a balance we can do to be able to share the information with the public in a way that they understand that this is just a thought process over the next five years and why we're doing it. And there is a, a science behind it. I think the community hopefully is pleased with the fact that over the last three years, we've done a lot more road construction than I think has happened in a while. We've been ready, Perkins, Sixth Street Corridor, those types of things are getting great customer, you know, citizen input. And so I'm hoping we can find a balance. Because I appreciate you coming in and explaining this, it was a surprise to me, it's a lot of this time. But I also can't say that I think you've done an excellent job explaining to us why you've chosen to do these things over the last five years.
Thank you for that. Certainly, we can do better at getting things out to the public. And, and we have no issues at all about scheduling, going to the chamber or civic groups or whatever as part of this process in the future. And I've already had discussions with staff about, about that in the future that we'll have to build that into our timeline. And so we'll, we'll do better.
I do think it's, it's maybe an opportunity as we do go out and talk with the community about some of those plans, not only to reinforce some of the information, like how these decisions are made, but also to understand, you know, if somebody's purchased property and looking for a larger development so that we do have some understanding. I feel like sometimes those conversations happen not always in front of the, you know, city staff to start. And maybe somebody might say, hey, actually, I see you're planning this, but we're also planning this. And maybe there's some opportunity to make sure that we're getting all that included as well.
Certainly, good points.
A couple of points from me, Monty. Just one, while it does say on the agenda here that we would potentially approve this plan, we're not making a motion or approving any plan around, around these.
It's information only.
Yeah. Which is good because like you said in the presentation, this is kind of, this is based on the numbers and where you think what might need to be improved once we get that money two years down the road, four years down the road. But that will change over time. I was wondering if you could clarify a bit. You, you mentioned there was, you know, a part was resurfacing a part of Western that wouldn't happen if the Western reconstruction happens as part of a different plan, right? And so sometimes it's hard for all of us, I think, to keep straight this. Most of what we're talking about here is pavement management, maintenance that we're doing, which is separate than, you know, you mentioned the Third Street Bridge reconstruction, these other projects which are outside of the pavement management program and don't even appear on these maps, Greg?
That's great.
Can you help clarify where, where those other projects are or how that sort of fits with this?
I certainly appreciate that. You know, I have trouble keeping track of all the things just in our purview. And, and we don't have anything to do with electric. We don't have anything to do with the police department. We don't have anything to do with all the other things that you have to keep track of as well. So I appreciate the, the complexities. The, we, we have several sources of funds. And our primary source of fund is the pavement, is the half-cent sales tax, which we primarily dedicate to pavement management, not exclusively, but primarily. We also use the half-cent sales tax to match projects from ODOT that we participate with in. And also other things we might need to do as well. One of the things that we keep is a, is a reserve that, and, and one of the things we ask for every year is deferred maintenance. So if we have a repair that needs to be done, that's beyond the expertise or the, or the time that our operations staff has, we can use those funds to do that as well and contract it out. Then in addition to that, we have funds that we get from developers for projects for their share. One of those would be at Fourth and Hester, those apartment complexes. The developers were responsible for half a street of, one lane of paving and the parking. And rather than have them do that work and then us come back a couple of years later and, and do our half, we just took the money from them or, you know, we got the money from them, put in on deposit. And then we have to spend that money for that purpose. We can't spend it for anything else. And that's what we've done in that situation. We have other instances where we do that. And then, of course, we get general fund money for specific projects. Sometimes we get grants, community development block grants, sometimes for streets. Other transportation grants that we can apply for and hopefully we'll get. And then those are generally matched with general funds. And sometimes we just get general funds such as the bridge on Third Street that we talked about. Then we have the bridge of, on Husband Street over East Bimmer that we will bid at the same time. The work we did on the sidewalks along Western and Hall of Fame were from the general fund as well as that overlay was from the general fund. So we do get from time to time money from general fund. We have, it's called the STEP Plan, the Stillwater Transportation Enhancement Plan, which was a comprehensive plan done 2010, something like that, 2010, 2012. Did an update, it's in the process of being updated. The engineering part of that was updated in 2017. We relooked at projects that need to be done in the next 30 to 40 years. And Western is on that list that we need to do something. And basically, from, from 12th to 6th, it needs to be five lanes according to that plan. And then four lanes from 32nd to 19th.
Good thing Pat wasn't here for you to say that. It's a good thing Pat wasn't here to say that.
Yeah, well, Pat and I have had lots of discussions and, and I have changed my thinking on a lot of things because of those discussions. I'm still not a, a full lover of roundabouts, but I, I do see the merit of them. And, and again, three lanes in, in, in certain locations. The, but anyway, that, and that was my comment about Western. If the council finds the funds and, and those are on our project list and prior to COVID, that was one of the things we had talked about, was maybe doing some of those projects. If that happens, then of course, we would delay that money. But we still have to keep the streets maintained until we can rebuild them. And it's kind of, Duck Street's another example. We talked about, our goal for Duck Street was to be wide bike tracks, wide sidewalks, narrower lanes, a boulevard, all those good things at $12 million. Until we come up with $12 million, we still got to maintain it. So we're going to go ahead and overlay it and, and do what we can.
Thank you, Monty, I appreciate that overview. Counsel, anything further on the transportation plan?
Monty, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Are you sure? Um, right now, the, the infrastructure plan at the federal level is a lot in the news in terms of potential funding that might be available to communities. What are we doing? I know, so this obviously is, is a great start, I imagine, to thinking about how, if funds were available, where we might engage funds. But is that something that we're also looking at and planning for?
Yes, we, we have conversations with, with our friends at ODOT on those things. Particularly after the Sixth Avenue Corridor public hearing that we had, a public meeting. We, we had some discussions and, and some talk about some possible funding sources for some of those types of things that might be coming down the pike. So, so yes, that is something we, if somebody's giving away free money, we'll try and be at the head of the line. We're, we're not always successful, but we try.
It does seem like those shovel-ready projects, it's a word that's being tossed around, again, that was a word that was being tossed around a lot back in the last financial kind of recovery.
And that's a good point because you remember when COVID came along, we, we slid the bridge projects because they are truly shovel-ready. And, and I said at the time, we could probably slide them a year or so and that'd be about it. And so, excuse me, when things started coming along on this infrastructure, we did reach out and, and see if there were going to be any funds quickly coming along. And it doesn't look like there will be. look like there will be any. So, as I've said before, I don't want people to go underneath those and see what it looks like. So, we've just got to get moving on those, so we're going to go ahead and move on.
Okay, well, I would encourage, to Roger Rose's point about public participation, hopefully, folks will take a look at the five-year maintenance plan and what this looks like over the next few years, in terms of what's on the list. And if you have comments or thoughts, please bring them to us and let us know what you think about what needs to be maintained. At this point, we'll move to item 10E, which is approval of the fiscal year 21 pavement management program. Mr. Gardens?
So, continuing on, this plan, we definitely are going to ask you for approval. This will be the fiscal year 21 funds. It's about $3.94 million, a little less than that. These are the streets that we are looking at, and let me get my list to make sure that I'm saying them correctly. So, for reconstruction, we're looking at Knoblock from Fourth to Third. And I want to kind of reassure some people that from Third to University, where we have all the retail, we probably, we're certain that we don't need to tear all that up. We'll do some kind of surface treatment, but we don't plan to come in and disrupt folks' lives and livelihoods in there. Between Fourth and Third, we will have to tear that and reconstruct it. The big challenge there is going to be the water lines, particularly between Third and University. We believe we've got a way of bringing those, taking care of those by remote underground techniques, and minimize how much we have to tear up in that area. So, that would be our major reconstruction. Microsurface, we're going to be looking at Washington from Hall of Fame up to Lakeview. And once we complete that, we will have done Washington, starting at Hall of Fame all the way to Richmond. We will have resurfaced Main and Boomer, starting at Sixth all the way to Lakeview. So, we will have made some pretty major improvements to that area, and you start looking at what we've done on Hall of Fame and bring them across, start to see where some of our heaviestly traveled streets that aren't on the highway network, we'll be in pretty good shape with. Talk a little bit about the surface treatment. Those are basically the streets that we overlaid last year, and that's a rejuvenating agent that, one thought that works in a lot of community is, you put that agent on the first year after you've done the overlay, and then every six to seven years, you do it, and that drastically delays how much you have to, how often you have to melon overlay. So, if that is indeed true, and we'll know in six or seven years, and I will not be here, and you can blame me, or whoever sitting in your seats can blame me, but if that is true, we will be spending less than $100,000, as opposed to a couple of million dollars. And therefore, that, again, this idea of, let's keep the arterials and collectors in good shape with a little bit of money, and that lets us spend the other money on the locals. That's an example of that. Our melon overlay, we want to do McElroy between Washington and Boomer, and that would be this section right here, and kind of bring that up to shape. We're getting ready to do some work here. We have a little there to do in the future as well, but that starts getting McElroy in better shape. We want to do Western from 32nd to 19th, similar to what, and I agree with Roger's comment, similar to what the discussion I just had about doing Western between 12th and 6th. We were looking at Western and hoping that we could get that in a project, rebuild it according to the Transportation Enhancement Plan. And we had that further back in the 20, in the five-year plan, in case we didn't get the money to do it. I just don't think it's going to make it much longer. It's starting to show some age now. Roger's right about, you know, we need left-turn lanes, we need this and that, and that brings up some gaps we may have in our development review that we may need to look at, but in the meantime, we've got to do something with the street. We still got to keep it going. So, that's the reason we've brought it to you for recommendation. And then, we're also looking at Lakeview between Perkins and Jardo as well. And one of the reasons that we're looking at that one is, we want to hurry up and get that done before we get Perkins Road too torn up, but we would anticipate that being used somewhat as a deterrent by people when we start tearing up Perkins Road, and we want to get it in a little better shape.
Which one was that, Monty?
That's Lakeview from Perkins Road over to Jardo, that mile that's in there.
Okay.
Are you finding?
Yeah, I see it on the map, I just don't see it on the list.
Well, we didn't, we missed getting that one in the report, but it is on the spreadsheet, and it is on the map. And more importantly, it's included in the amount of money that we're going to ask you to approve.
Monty, is this something that we publish anywhere on the webpage, the city webpage?
We typically put these on, under the transportation projects, and we can certainly add the five-year plan to that as well, with the appropriate notes that it's just a plan.
Yep.
Can you also create a standard response for the, why are you working on a street you just paved?
Yes.
Question?
Yes.
I mean, I get it, it's absolutely the right thing to do, but I get that question more than any other. Didn't you just pave that street? Why are you working on it again?
We actually have an example that we could post on that as well, that would help that. I wanted to talk a little bit about diamond grinding and how we use all the data we have, and it's a lot of data. We're proposing to diamond grind Hall of Fame between Washington and Knoblock. So, when you look at, when you look at the numbers, it says the surface condition is 91 to 96, with an average of 94. But the surface condition is made up of three parameters: cracking, rutting, and then the quality of the ride. And just like in, when we were talking previously, I showed you how one number could be off from everything else, well, here's the numbers for that section. You'll see that for surface, for the cracking and the rutting, they're all 100s. As you can see on the ride quality, it's 37, 55, 74, and 67, which is not very good. And as you drive Hall of Fame, you realize that. One of the things about roughness is, it actually can lead to a quicker deterioration of your pavement, because you start getting impact loads. So, by coming in and diamond grinding a relatively new street that structurally is in great condition, it's another question, why are you doing this? Because we need to get the ride, because that's one thing, that's what people realize when they drive the street. And then, the second is, it does extend the life of the project. So, that's why we recommended that segment to you for inclusion in this year's plan. And I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
So, Monty, I'm curious, when you're talking about ride quality, so that section of street on Hall of Fame has no cracks, there's no ruts in it, what is it that owes to the poor ride quality?
Up and down.
So, the grade?
Grade in it, and some of that could come from construction, some could be just our soils move, and we get some of that.
On the question of Western, I mean, I get, you know, like you said with Duck, right? We want to do a better, bigger project, we need to do more, but we've also got to keep it from becoming a dirt road, right? In the meantime, what, if we save that money back now, how much are we talking about for a bigger project on Western? How much of that would, what percentage of this cost would go into that bigger? How much of the bigger project would that cover?
I don't know that I have those numbers right now, but I'd be happy to do that research and let you know.
Because if we weren't going to overlay it right now, because we were talking about doing a bigger project that really would cover Western, would have to cover Western from 32nd to 6th, right? That, to me, I would assume is not a cheap project, if we ever get to it.
It was several million dollars.
And how much is this overlay, just to do this section? And then, it's one point something for both of the, for all the melon overlay? But I didn't see the breakdown.
Oh, it's going to be 400, 500,000 would be my guess. Western, we've got it at $411,000.
That's one of those, yeah, I was going to say, damned if you do, damned if you don't kind of things, right? I mean...
And unfortunately, because if you rebuild it, you want to take care of the vertical alignment, you know, there may be some of it we could keep, but you're going to lose a lot of it. And whatever heavy construction traffic you got, it's probably going to tear up the rest But if you want to pull that one, we're happy to take a second look at it and come back and give you further information.
There's some development going on there right now, too.
That's correct.
Yeah, there's a lot.
There's two subdivisions going in there, that's correct.
So, is that construction going to have any effect on this road right now?
It could. There's two entrances onto it, so certainly it could.
We're talking about, I mean, these projects won't get done until next summer at the earliest, right?
That would be correct.
What would, I'm just looking at the fiscal year 22 plan, if we took Western out, where would you spend that 400,000 this year? I mean, I guess the idea would be, if we're not spending the 400,000 on the project now, we should be putting it in the bank and saving it for the, but at the same time, we have $4 million every year that we could, you know, but there's another $400,000 project in here next year that we could put it on, right?
We can look at that, let me back up a minute. We would anticipate being able to do Western and Lakeview much quicker, because they are what we call an open section, and so, we can design those and get those bid very easily. It's basically, you don't have to worry, you know, you don't have curb and gutters you have to worry about, you don't have sidewalks that you have ADA issues you have to worry about. We can basically say, start here, go here, go this wide, average this depth, tell us how much it's going to be, and put that in a couple of sheets, and then put the boilerplate with it. So, we could churn those out very quickly, and probably would. But, at the same token, I'm more than happy to pull the Western part out of that and look at other candidates.
Could we approve it without that section, that piece in there? And have you come back with maybe just a longer-term plan about Western?
You certainly can.
And then, we can decide if we want to leave it in.
And then, we come back and amend the plan at another meeting.
Any other questions, counselors? All right, so...
And I would also, no, I think we're still good on the budget amendment, because you would still approve the 3.9 million, and then, we would just come back to you and you'd tell us where to spend that differently.
Because it's the way the motion is ordered, is not to exceed, so...
That's correct.
We could also just defer the item altogether, and just come back, I don't know, it's two weeks, can you come back and give us a quick update for two weeks, and then we can approve the whole thing, one way or the other?
I think we will certainly try to be here on the May 3rd. I will not be here, but we could have someone else here.
Do you need it, do you need an approval on this to get going?
I would like to have an approval, so we can get going on the rest of it, that's correct. But if you want to table it, we could table it as well.
If we approved, we'd still have an update in two weeks, though, on what
Yes.
options are there.
Norman, do you have a, do you have an opinion one way or the other?
Yes.
I mean, do you care if we just table it and say, let's just figure out what, if we think Western's worth waiting for, or would you rather approve everything except Western and bring that one back later?
You're saying that they'd like to get some of these other projects underway, so if there was 400 and...
About 400,000, contingency on that, or 450,000.
I would recommend that you just say that we're putting the Western project and the funding temporarily on hold, and the funding for that per portion.
Minus Western.
That make sense? Can we do that? Are we allowed?
You can approve the, deal with the recommendation, and then, with the exception of whatever things you want to pull out and move forward that way.
Do we need to be specific with the cost of the Western road project, or do we just, can we just pull the Western road?
We'll pull the project completely, and then, we'll come back with the initial plan that we did the next time, which is better for the others.
So, I guess I'm asking, is, does somebody need to do the math?
I don't think so. We'll just approve it at 3.9, and then, he can come back and tell us what he wants to do with that.
Okay.
So, who wants to make a motion?
Yeah, so, motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 21 pavement management program at a cost not to exceed $3,932,500, with the amendment to pull the Washington project and...
Western.
Or Western, excuse me. Utilization of the master services agreement as needed to support city. Does that work?
Have approved the budget amendment.
The budget amendment.
Oh, sorry. Engineering and the designer projects and the associated budget amendment.
There you go. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the pavement management program at this cost, minus the Western program, and to approve the attached budget amendment. Everybody clear? Questions? Teresa, can you call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
They voted 5 to 0, the fiscal year 21 pavement management program is approved. Thank you, Monty. We always appreciate your education. Next up is item 10F, accept the community development block grant contract in the amount of $490,000. I'm going to let Becky Taylor explain this.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. I'm here this evening to talk about Phase 2 of the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program that we hope to begin soon. To provide some background information, due to the COVID-19 public health emergency, a large number of residents have sustained and continued to sustain devastating economic losses, causing them to be in need of immediate assistance. In an effort to make a In an effort to make a positive impact in the lives of Stillwater residents, last December, Council appropriated $150,000 of CARES funding towards the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program. This was a new program and it was designed to provide immediate relief to Stillwater residents that experienced financial hardship due to COVID-19. Utility rent or mortgage assistance was provided for those that applied and qualified. The program was administered by Our Daily Bread and by January 15th, all $150,000 was awarded to 146 Stillwater households. In January, Resolution Number 2021-1 was approved to facilitate the receipt of the Community Development Block Grant Coronavirus Relief Funds and to administer the grant in accordance to the rules and regulations as outlined within the grant. I am happy to report that the City of Stillwater has been awarded this funding for $490,000. Phase Two, the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program, will utilize this funding and follow the criteria as outlined within the grant. In order to be eligible for this program, applicants must be a resident of Stillwater within city limits. Applicants must also be able to demonstrate direct economic loss or financial impact due to COVID-19, and this is similar to what was required in Phase One of this program. An aspect of this program that is different than Phase One is the income requirement. The applicant must be considered a low and moderate income household based on income limits established by HUD. For example, a household of one needs to fall below $34,850 or a household of four below $49,750. Financial assistance may be provided only for delinquent utility bills and missed rent payments for primary assistance, uh, primary residents in Stillwater. And Stillwater residents are only eligible to receive funds once during this program. The City of Stillwater contracted with Our Daily Bread to administer this assistance program. They were the program administrators for Phase One and did a great job. The application will be located online on Our Daily Bread's website and shared widely throughout the community. If someone needs assistance filling out the application, they can call or meet with ODB staff for help or use a computer at Stillwater Public Library. As program administrators, ODB will process, review, and approve or deny applications based on the applicant eligibility. Additionally, Our Daily Bread will keep a record of the administrative costs incurred from the administration of the program and will be reimbursed at the conclusion of the program, which will be detailed in the contract. The City will put out a media release when we know the exact start date of the program, but we are hopeful the program will begin in a week or two. And I would be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this program before I share with you our recommended action.
Thank you, Becky. Counselors?
Becky, the money can you use for utility and rent? Would they be people that would utilize both? Or do you have to decide which one?
It could be either. Yep.
And the one time, does that mean just for a one month period? Or does that mean if they were delinquent multiple months in a utility bill and a rent, that they could recover those costs as well?
Yeah, you can recover, the grant from CDBG says we can recover up to six months delinquent funding. I don't know if that's what Our Daily Bread will do with the program to make sure that the money can be allotted for a large amount of people, but it would be more than one month if needed.
And the administrative cost to Our Daily Bread, is that covered by the CDBG grant as well?
Yes, it covers up to 6% of the grant.
That's so, I'm just so, it's so encouraging to know that this money is out there and that we were able to capture it for our community. Thank you.
There was a lot of help from city staff to do that.
What's your recommendation for us, Becky?
Staff recommends accepting 18119 Community Development Block Grant Contract in the amount of $490,000. Authorize mayor to sign all associated contract documents and approve the budget amendments reflecting receipt and expenditure of CDBG CV funds in the amount of $490,000 for the purposes of funding the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Assistance Program Phase Two. And a resolution is later on the agenda for approval to authorize the creation of the Stillwater Resident COVID Impact Program Phase Two and to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Our Daily Bread.
Okay. So we need this one now to approve the funding and the, and the budget amendment, and then we'll talk about the resolution in a minute? Counselors?
Motion to accept staff recommendation to accept the Community Development Block Grant for COVID relief.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to accept staff recommendation and accept these grant funds. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti? Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
You voted five to zero. That item is approved. Thank you, Becky, and to all of the folks at, on city staff who worked hard to get that grant awarded. Item 10G, approve an agreement with Lakeview Landing LLC for redevelopment of the former Boomer Lake Station Power Plant and construction of new residential and commercial developments. Melissa Reams.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Melissa Reams, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. Here this evening to celebrate a milestone in a very long journey for readaptive use of the Boomer Lake Power Station. And on the screen, we are being challenged tonight with our technology. I wanted to give you kind of an outlay, if you will, of what this development is going to look like. So for your point of reference, Lakeview is along the top of the photo. Boomer runs along the left-hand side. I don't know if you can see my cursor. You've got the lake over here to the east side. Residential site Phase One abuts those gin sets that are out there and kind of a blank property. Here's your commercial site, which includes the superstructure. And then Phase Two is also property owned by the city. It's those two outlots that abut Boomer Road. And then you've got additional commercial sites there in Phase Three and along High Point Drive here in Phase Four. But tonight, we're really going to talk and hone in on Phase One, commercial, Phase One residential, and to some degree, Phase Two. And then we will bring this back and discuss Three and Four at the appropriate time that those are ready for development. I wanted to introduce to you this evening some of the partners that have worked with the city on this project because it's been, it's been five years since we decommissioned that power plant. And this has been a long journey. And first and foremost, here in the audience this evening is our partners from the Chamber, Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, Justin Mingus, Trenton Inselman, and Joshua Hawkins. Hawkins? Yes, okay, good. They have really worked hard with the, the developer and run point for us. They've run out there to the power station when somebody needed in. They've worked numbers and, and talked to state development type people. So we really appreciate our partnership with the Chamber. I think on the call this evening as well through Zoom, whether we can see them or not, is Dan and Lisa Harden, uh, Dan Bachelor, Lisa Harden with the Center for Economic Development Law, one of our key legal partners. And you're going to see some examples of their work this evening in the redevelopment agreement. And then finally, the developer is, or the redeveloper is with us this evening, Shay Braun. And we appreciate his partnership as we look towards what the future for Boomer Lake Station looks like. So just, just to remind everybody, we decommissioned that power station on June 30th, 2016, when its, its job had ceased and we had turned the, the mission of producing electric power over to the new Stillwater Energy Center. At that point, staff began researching uses to repurpose the superstructure. And our director, or our project manager for special projects, John McClany, gave council a presentation on March 16th of 2017 of examples all across the world of how people had gone in and repurposed these power stations and made them something fantastic for those communities. Forward again, another couple of years, and we got to July 8th of 2019, where council authorized staff to solicit proposals from the development community about what that adaptive reuse would look like on the power station. And John presented on October the 7th of 2019 to council two proposals. One from Lakeview Landing LLC and the other one was an engineering firm out of Tulsa. Their, their thought process was a water park, a big themed water park. And Lakeview Landing is a mixed-use development. Mixing retail, residential, office space into one great place to go and, and hang out, so to speak. So you can see the five-year process that was involved there. Once we, once you approve the project, the partners, Chamber, Center for Economic Development Law, and a Citizen TIF Review Committee headed by Councilor Wedlake, we all got to work in developing the agreements that would govern this project amongst the partners. And on the committee that Dr. Wedlake chaired, we came up with one of the pieces for funding. And that was TIF Number Four and TIF Number Five if and when needed. And so that, those TIFs became adopted in December of 2020. And all of this was amongst COVID. I mean, COVID really kind of delayed the project some because the Citizens TIF Review Committee was not going to meet in person. So we, we had to forestall that a little bit. And it did slow down some of our discussions with the developer as well. But we persevered and here we are tonight, bringing you a completed redevelopment agreement. In the packet, and I think on the, the website for the community to read, is an executive summary of that redevelopment agreement along with the original text of the agreement. And I've planned tonight to just kind of hit some of the highlights. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that you all might have. Dan's on the call and so is the developer. If there are questions I can't answer, they'll be happy to jump in. First and foremost, I think the scope of the project again envelops all of this city-owned property. So you've got the residential site, you've got the commercial site, and you've got this Phase Two site down here. So that's all currently not on the tax rolls. That's why TIF, TIF Number Four, oh, it's not showing. Can we pull the map back? There we go. So residential, thank you, Councilor Jaloski. Residential site, commercial site, Phase Two, those outlined parcels. This comprises TIF Number Four. It is a great way to do a TIF because its basis S value is zero. And so it's clean, easy to deal with. And then once we get to Three and Four, if needed, those are, will be component pieces of TIF Number Five. So you have a funding mechanism in addition to any kind of equity that the developer brings to the table. Mixed use, we've talked about that. And initially, Phase Two will be landscaped open space. So it's not going to look like it does today, which is just.
Thank God.
Credit, you know, cracked and peeled concrete. It is going to look like a green space there. And so that is part of the, the scope of the agreement. Some of the highlights, we will transfer the currently city-owned BLS property to the developer. And in doing so, in exchange, we also will be advancing up to $6 million in funding for the redevelopment of the superstructure. So this commercial site Phase One. Those, those advances, it's going to be treated like a traditional construction loan. There are going to be certain milestones that we will incorporate into the, the note that is going to be issued. And again, in my, in my vision, and I think Mr. Bachelor's vision, is that it will be percentage of completion verified by architects, engineers, and inspectors so that we know we're on track and where we're, what we're paying for. That note, we're going to borrow, SUA is going to loan money to CETA. So utility authority is going to loan over time $6 million to the Economic Development Authority. And there will be notes that, that document all of that. And those notes will be repaid out of the taxes that come into TIF Number Four. The nice thing about this is, the notes, is that they're at 1.75% per year. Right now, we're getting 25 basis points maybe on our investments. So it is, it is good that way. It becomes a less liquid investment, though, because it's not like a CD or, or any, a money market or anything like that that we can go get our hands on quickly. So they, there is a downside, if you will, to that. And the term right now is 25 years. If the TIF takes off like we all hope that it will, it might, could shorten that term on that note. We would pay the developer, advance him $250,000 out of the $6 million at time of closing, when we sign all the paperwork. He has estimated that he's invested $820,000 already into this project over the last five years that we've been talking about this. And it is going to take another $250,000 to get the plans to the point where the plan, our planners can take them and, and start evaluating and getting those construction-type documents and getting our, our, our guidelines going forward. In exchange for that, we will receive a covenant or a conditional agreement that says that we, we are the owners of those plans at that point. So right now, the risk would be the $250,000, although we would have the plans if something were to happen, that we could move the project forward ourselves. We talked about the construction draw schedule. The city will also retain the sidewalk. And, and the sidewalk is part of the Cameo Trail, if you can see it right here, kind of along the blue line. And we're going to retain this beachfront right here. But our intent is to allow the, the development to have access to the beachfront because that will be some of the activities that go along. We are starting to look at, is swimming something that could be allowed here in this part of the lake? And we need to really investigate because there's some intake. Ducks there and, you know, heaven forbid a child swim that direction. So staff, we're working on that. We're going to make sure safety first there before we swim. And then, so we will, we will develop and maintain this beachfront. And we'll, we will find on for the maintenance. It's not going to shift from us. And then we will also help do some in-kind utility relocates and some infrastructure improvements. The redeveloper is going to adhere to all state, local, and federal guidelines during the construction of this project so that we make sure that we stay in compliance with whatever regulations are out there since we do abut this, this regional lake. And then as another, kind of the last big thing, and then I will entertain any questions, is how do we protect the city again and protect SUA and protect CETA from any kind of default? And nobody likes to think that the project or the developer might default, but, but we have to protect ourselves. but, but we have to protect ourselves. And so in the redevelopment agreement is established covenants for minimum tax payments to make sure that the debt is serviced through those, those payments. And there will be the issuance of promissory notes. And these minimum tax covenants will be filed at the county office, also with some preferential liens, so that if something happens, the city, CETA, and SUA are all standing in, at the head of the line in the event of, of some sort of bankruptcy or creditor payments. And the other thing that I think is really kind of unique to this agreement is the assessment ratio for taxable value of property is more than likely going to be greater than the current 11.4% utilized by the, the county assessor. These particular properties, they will not go above the state maximum, which I think is 34%. But to make the project work, especially with the residential piece up here, that assessment value needed to be a little bit higher. And so that's different here than a lot of, a lot of agreements. I've thrown a lot at you, so questions. And this is a, this is a, a hard document to read. I've, I've spent a lot of time with it, and I'm still fine, feeling my way, so to speak.
You did a great job explaining all the I plan to say, the estimated date is September 1st of this year.
Yes, yes.
And completion of Phase One to, will be June 1st, 2023. That's everything inside and outside.
Yes. Yeah, and that, really, the estimated completion date is a little sooner. It was December 31st, but, and I think the developer was wise in asking for this. Things happen, you know? We're going to find stuff that we never knew existed there. And, and so he wanted to, he didn't want to promise and not deliver. So he gave himself a little bit of a backdoor, and we all like backdoors. You know, one of the other things I didn't mention, and Mary, if you'll let me, I'll, I'll go quickly, is the net income participation by CETA. And because we are such a, a large equity partner in this project, we are also going to share in some of the net cash flow. It does phase out as the development matures. And so it was, again, an encouragement to the developer to continue to develop Phases Three, Two, Three, and Four. And, but as those phases are developed, our participation in the net revenue is going to decline to zero.
That was
With a maximum of 30.
To start with, correct.
Is that income participation, does that offset the note? Does that go in as payments against the note, or that's just?
That's just income back to us. Because we still are going to be out-of-pocket money. We've already been out-of-pocket, legal fees and, and maintenance and, and things along those lines. We're going to contribute to the moving the utilities. So this is a way to kind of compensate the city for that. And in this, you're also going to get a resolution in, in a few minutes that really clearly defines how sales and use tax will be allocated to this project because that is part of the TIF. And because we are giving up the two pennies of non-dedicated sales tax, or that's the proposal, in use tax on any of the construction supplies purchased for the project, this net income participation was a way for us to participate in some of that coming back to us.
The development agreement and the, the financing, the, the loan that we'll be providing as part of this is only for the redevelopment of the Energy Center, correct? It's not?
Correct, it's not for the residential piece. The residential piece, while it pays into the TIF, because as those residences are built, the value's going to go up. But those taxes, or the, the $6 million of upfront financing is only for the superstructure.
And the projects are accounted for separately, so that we know
Yes.
that that funding is, is just being spent on the
Right, exactly.
Yes, sir.
One other important factor, I think is not a requirement in the development agreement, but something to consider is that the redeveloper is using local contractors for this project. So the many will recirculate here in town.
What else?
Oh, I'm sure there's things I should be telling you. And it's just an all-inclusive agreement. I think things will, will, will be working through MOUs. We need an MOU about the beachfront, and we need an MOU about the, the sidewalk and things along those lines. That is yet to be hammered out, but we're, we're going to work through those things. And you will get, you know, you'll get your chance to look at those and approve those as well. Justin and Trenton and Joshua, can you think of anything that, that we haven't shared with them? And please come up here so we can hear you.
I'm going to stop talking once you've sold it.
Melissa, I think you've done such a good job of kind of taking us back through the history of the property. This is, I mean, I've never redeveloped this kind of project before, but I do a lot of redevelopment in my work life. And it's so exciting to not only see this adaptive reuse, but a beneficial reuse for our community. Something that's currently not generating tax base for our community will all of a sudden be generating tax base for our community and become a destination for families and visitors that are in our community. Or I think it's, it's really exciting to think about. These are the types of properties, you know, the average developer isn't driving down the street and saying, oh, I really think that'd be easy to do right there. And so participation from the community, from the city, I think is so very important to redevelopment of these types of properties. It wouldn't happen without us, the market wouldn't allow it. So I'm so excited that we've, we've taken the time and thought hard and, I think, thoroughly. I'm really, I'm impressed with the thoroughness of all of this to get this property back into a beneficial reuse for our community.
And for our listeners that, and viewers that haven't heard us discuss this, because we've talked about this quite a bit. The superstructure itself will be part brewery, part rooftop bar and restaurant. Down in this little, tucked down in this little corner right here, this kind of jiggy jag, there's going to be an outdoor amphitheater, or at least that's a proposal on the, on the table right now. So, you know, lots of fun things that could go on there. Can you imagine being on that rooftop when we're shooting the fireworks off on, on Lakeview? It's going to be pretty awesome. The residential site, if you're wondering what that looks like, I wish I had, I have pictures, but I, I wish I had put them on the, the screen this evening. I think contemplated 12 to 16 three-story townhomes. And these will be very, could be, depending on the, the buyer, very upscale townhomes. But they will have the lake view. They will look out, you'll see kicker across the, the lake and, and look out onto the lake. So it looks to be very, very, very nice development.
Melissa, after, assuming we, we approve the redevelopment agreement, issues like design and layout and all that sort of stuff, I mean, that, the, the actual, there's, there's still more phases to come here, right? We're going to talk a little bit about
Yeah, absolutely.
exactly how it looks.
We, we shift a little bit, you know? We've been kind of courting each other and trying to get to this point where we agree that this is what we want to do. And Shay has engaged Studio Architects, which is a local architecture firm, and the city does a lot of business with them. Monty has already picked up the phone to call and visit with them about the project. So we were excited about that. So we'll start working, and Paula, you may want to come up here and join me. We'll start working on those planning documents so that we can make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted and make this, the, the, you know, that it adheres to what the rules and regulations are there. Paula and the planning team are going to develop, what do you call that? Roadmap, roadmap, so that we all know what we're doing, when we're doing it, and how we're doing it, and how things kind of fall into line. Then engineering's going to pick up, and they're going to look through and make sure that, you know, we're not going to, when you're close to bodies of water like this, and you're putting, from what I understand, and you're putting down surfaces that don't allow the water to soak in, like concrete, whoops, well, then the water has to go somewhere. And so it goes into the lake. And so maybe that raises the level of the lake to the point, maybe the dam can't handle it. So, you know, those are all things that we're going to be looking at as we move forward through this project.
And all in, for all the phases, we're talking about between 30 and 45 million dollars with the development here?
Correct, and that's the projected investment into the project's completion.
Okay. I, I'm just ecstatic about this. I'm really, really excited that the amount of work that has gone into it to this point has actually reached at least this milestone because it's been a lot, it's been a lot of talk and a lot of work and a lot of blood, sweat, and tears by the developer, by our team, by the Chamber team to try to make this thing happen. And the fact that, you know, this basically lays out the economics of how that will work. And it's, I think, a good investment for the city, it's a great investment for our community. It's a wonderful use of a piece of land that is sitting there doing nothing and will cost us more money to not do something with over time. So I, I, I am just ecstatic about it. I can't wait for this thing to be done and, and for us to be moving forward on the next phase. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Braun has, has shown this interest in the community and is willing to, to do what he's done to this point to, to make this project happen. And it's, it's going to be, it's going to be great. I wish you would have had some of the pretty pictures up here.
I know, I should have.
I'm sure we'll look at those again at some point.
We'll try and get those out on the website, you know, on the project page. So once we get that developed, so
Yeah, absolutely.
everybody can kind of see what it's going to look like.
Good. Do you have a recommendation for us on this item?
I do, staff recommends approval of the redevelopment agreement by and between the Stillwater Economic Development Authority and Lakeview Landing LLC dated April 19th, 2021. And to authorize, I think the mayor needs to sign at the back of the document.
So just to be clear, is the council approving this, or is CETA going to approve it at our next meeting?
You, you actually, oh, go ahead, John.
Both of us are going to approve it.
Yes.
All right, councilors, is there further comment, discussion, or motion on this item?
Question to approve agreement with Lakeview Landing LLC for redevelopment of the former Boomer Lake Station power plant and construction of the residential and commercial development.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve this redevelopment agreement. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, this redevelopment agreement is approved. That's, it's, it is a huge deal, and we should all be standing up and clapping.
It is a huge deal.
Melissa, item H.
So
This is an explanation of the formula for determining the sales and use tax.
The resolution. So in Sections 3.3F, Section 4.91, and Section 4.15 of the development agreement that you just approved, it talks about, or it provides for non-dedicated sales tax generated within the increment district be allocated to the TIF, to TIF number four. And so this resolution is going to come in and clearly define, when we talk sales tax, are we meaning just sales tax, or are we meaning sales and use tax? And in this context, we're meaning sales and use tax. Kristi and I were having a discussion this morning. She says, how are we going to know who paid what in use tax? Well, and I want to say it's in the Section 4.91. It is incumbent upon the developer to make sure that the city is aware of what contractors they've been using, what vendors they've been using, and who has paid use tax, because that is not documentation that we receive from the Tax Commission. So I, I think there's a good carrot out there, if you will, for them to stay on top of this and to make sure that the city is aware of, of who's paying what when. And then the document, I believe, provides for 100%, yes, 100% of the non-dedicated sales and use tax to the increment. So on sales tax, the non-dedicated portion is two pennies.
And on use tax, it's?
On use tax, it's going to be the full 3.5%.
Yeah, none of it's dedicated.
Yeah.
So this just makes clear that both the sales and the use tax will be included in the calculation of the increment?
Correct.
Okay. Anything further on H? Any questions for Melissa?
Thank you very much.
That takes us on the agenda to item 11, which are resolutions. The first resolution is CC-2021-10, which is the authorization of Phase Two of the grant program to assist Stillwater residents experiencing financial hardship due to COVID-19. I don't think we need further explanation here unless anybody has questions. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2021-10.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 21, 21-10. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted. Item B is Resolution CC-2021-11, which is the resolution we just discussed approving the formula for determining the sales and use tax increment generated within the increment district number four. The city is still there. Any further questions or discussion?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2021-11.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
Councilor Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Resolution CC-2021-11 is adopted. Item 12, reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
We propose to be back to the question for Resolution 2511, Section 307. We do, if you'd like to negotiate with the International Association of Projectors, look at 455.
Thank you, Mr. Dorman. Mr. McNichol?
Yes, sir. Pre-construction activities such as ordering equipment are underway for the West Park List Station rehabilitation project. This wastewater list station was built in 1981. Residents in the West Park neighborhood will notice work being done within the city's easement on First Avenue, west of Oakdale Drive. For more information, visit stillwater.org and scroll down to the current projects link for Water Utilities Engineering Project. We appreciate our customers' patience as we work to improve Stillwater's wastewater collection system.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Zanotti?
Yes, the latest episodes of the FYI Stillwater Podcast are live, and they have a new video format. Listen in to learn all about the people who are keeping our city going. Available on Apple Podcasts, Google Podcasts, Spotify, and YouTube. Or you can listen online at fyisstillwater.podcast.com.
Excellent. Councilor Wedlake?
Yes, sir. Have you been stockpiling some household items that cannot be tossed with your regular trash? They may qualify for free drop-off at the city's hazardous household waste event. During this event, you can drop off household pollutants like oil-based paints, pesticides, herbicides, household cleaning products, and more. Stop by the Convenience Center Collection, Convenience Collection Center at 807 South Perkins Road. Stop by the Convenience Center Collection, uh, Convenience Collection Center at eight oh seven South Perkins Road on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, between eight AM and one PM to participate. For more information, go to stillwater.org/events or visit the City of Stillwater's Facebook page.
Excellent, thank you. Councillor Jaloski?
Yes. Speak Up Stillwater is a civic engagement platform designed to give you an opportunity to tell us what you think. Stillwater residents are the city's most important asset and having conversations with you is important. Speak Up Stillwater helps city council and staff set the course for important projects taking place at the local government level. Ready to get involved? Visit speakup.stillwater.org. I know a lot of our, some of our more exciting projects, I think, are on that platform right now. The Sixth Street Corridor and opportunities to provide some feedback and input there, which are really important to those projects.
I like that, that tool because it does allow us to have a little more organized conversations on some of those topics. So yeah, please get in there and...
Better than a Facebook post.
What isn't? Councillor Hawkins?
The City of Stillwater will be offering a OSU student move out special at the Convenience Collection Center located at eight oh seven South Perkins Road. All throughout the month of May, students with a valid OSU ID will be able to drop off furniture, appliances without free on, mattresses, computers, televisions and stereos for free. If you have questions about the event, contact Waste Management Director Chris Knight at four oh five, five three three, eight four two four.
Please, please use this free service and don't leave junk on the side of the road. Move out time is always a little bit of a struggle, but we're trying to help. So please use, please use that service. Now, unfortunately, it's time to start mowing your lawn again. Luckily, my children are old enough to do it for me now. It's good times, but make sure, please, when you mow your lawn, make sure your lawn, your grass clippings are in your yard and out of the street. When it rains, glass, grass clippings and other pollutants can be washed down the storm drain and end up in the creeks, rivers and lakes. It leads to problems like an overgrowth of algae or localized flooding. So please help keep us, help us keep only rain in the storm drain. It's better for your grass, it's better for the environment and it's better for our waterways. So go get your blower and blow the grass clippings back up onto your yard when they go out on the street. I didn't know about this as an issue until I, I think probably early in my council, we started talking about it. And so now I go make sure I get all those grass, grass clippings back up on the yard. All right, at this time, I will recess the city council meeting and we will jump to our next agenda, which is the Stillwater Utilities Authority. Sure. Yep. How much? I suppose we could do that. Even though now you're going to get Bill and the folks in the city staff management for making them lay longer. All right, at this point, I will call the Stillwater Economic Development Authority Meeting for April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one to order. On the consent docket, we have special meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve consent docket?
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent docket. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. The only item on this agenda is item five A, approve agreement with the Lakeview Landing LLC for the redevelopment of former Boomer Lake Station Power Plant and construction of residential and commercial developments on adjoining properties. Melissa, we'd like to hear the whole thing again. Trustees, further discussion on this or is there a motion?
Motion to approve the redevelopment agreement between Lakeview Landing LLC and the City of Stillwater and Stillwater Economic Development Authority.
We have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that redevelopment agreement is approved. There are no other items unless there's a report. Anybody have a report? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn Seda. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Stillwater Economic Development Authority is now adjourned. All right, at this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Utilities Authority Special Meeting Agenda, Special Meeting for April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. On the consent docket, we have special meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
No, go ahead. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item three is public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. We do have one person signed up to address this tonight and it's Henri Yuhara, who I think is visiting us via Zoom.
Okay, can you see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Well, good evening, SUA trustees. My name is Henri Yuhara, Stillwater resident. Before I speak about the rate per bezel that I'm here for, you may be wondering why I, what I have to say should have any bearing on this matter due to the fact that I'm not an expert in the field of rate structure design. So I thought I'd give you a bit of my background. I grew up in Stillwater, attended Highland Park Elementary and graduated from CE Donut High. Always liked to mention that I played on the state runner-up high school tennis team. I have degrees from Yale University in Applied Physics, an advanced degree in Electrical Engineering and Computer Science from Stanford, studying under one of the inventors of modern CPU design, and an MBA from UC Berkeley concentrating in finance and marketing. I have over twenty-five years' experience in the computer and semiconductor fields, having been a CPU designer at Hewlett-Packard and a member of the largest computer startup of its time founded by the inventor of the IBM three sixty mainframe. I personally founded two computer hardware companies, serving as president funded by Silicon Valley Venture Capital, including Sequoia Capital and international corporations from Asia and Europe. I've also consulted for high-tech startups to help develop business plans and initial funding strategies and I taught for one year at OSU as an adjunct professor in the Computer Science Department. I'm here to follow up on my statement from two weeks ago to ask that the proposed DG rate approval be delayed until changes are made that I think are in the best interest of the SUA and its customers. These changes can be evaluated and made in a matter of days. I submitted a presentation that explains what these changes are and why I'm recommending them. I never thought I'd be here to say this, but the current proposal is too friendly to large DG customers. The proposal has a cross-subsidization issue by using the wholesale rate for selling grid power to DG customers. A DG customer gets a whopping eight point one cents per kilowatt hour discount on every kilowatt hour of grid power he consumes, even when he doesn't generate any of his own renewable power. The reason a DG customer should get a break on his bill is because he generates his own renewable power, not because he uses grid power. You may hear that this is part of the reason for setting the customer fee so high at fifty-one dollars and eighty cents a month. Even with this higher fee, the SUA will take a hit from not fully recovering grid power costs purchased from GRDA at five hundred and nineteen kilowatt hours and above. Let me give you a concrete example to drive home this point. A regular customer pays two hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty cents for two thousand kilowatt hours of power in a month. A DG customer not generating any renewable power would pay a hundred and five dollars and eighty cents. This makes no sense. The exact hit to the SUA at any power consumption level can be seen on the slide twenty of my presentation in the red shaded area above five hundred and nineteen kilowatt hours. My other issue is the DG customer fee is set too high. It would be the highest among Oklahoma utility survey. It recovers some fixed costs that I don't even think should be the responsibility of DG customers. The result is it penalizes potential smaller customers who consume less than the average amount of power, effectively shutting them off from this program. My recommendation is to base the rate design on SUA costs for the customer fee and the retail rate for grid power. Slide ten of my presentation shows what this could look like. This would make us more comparable to other utilities in the state. The downside of going with the current proposal is that it will require convoluted patches like restricting who and what type of installation capacity can qualify for this rate structure. The underlying problem will still remain, even with these workarounds, and large DG customers will be greeted with a very nice gift in the form of much lower power bills in the wintertime. All the effort that went into precisely calculating the fee to recover fixed costs is undone by the rate design itself. You may also hear that this policy can always be revised at a later date. So what's the big deal? The big deal is that changing policies every few months or even a year makes for an unstable environment for both customers and the SUA. It's not a good way to proceed. The changes I'm asking for would not take long to evaluate, a matter of days, not months, and I volunteer my time to assist. So I'm asking that you defer a decision today and allow evaluation of these changes before proceeding with adoption. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Yuhara. All right, that takes to item five A, approve the following items related to the West College Sewer Line Project. I'm going to let Bill explain those to us.
Good evening, Bill Meliss, Deputy Director of City Engineering. Here to ask you tonight to consider and authorize some additional professional services for a sewer line replacement project that is currently underway. The, this first slide summarizes the scope of the project and shows a map of the areas included. The kind of the core area of the project is the, is in West College, kind of the near and around the fraternity and sorority area and then some other nearby areas that had selected specific sewer lines that need replacing. Also includes, or sorry, that's about ten thousand linear feet total. Old clay sewer lines and brick manholes and also approximately eighty-five manholes that we're going to rehabilitate all around the city. And the designer is currently working on the ninety percent submittal. Here on the next slide, this is just one example of some of the narrow easements that exist in this area that don't really, barely provide access, much less the ability to work on the sewer lines or replace them. And so that's a good point to mention that we'll use trenchless technologies as much as we can, but that's not always feasible. In some cases, we can do what's called pipe bursting, which is essentially dragging a new pipe through the old pipe. But you still have to dig it up to reconnect services, you have to dig in manholes and in some places, the pipe bursting is just not feasible. So we do need additional easements. Our, with our consultant, we've evaluated and need about ninety-six parcels. That includes some new easements, some wider easements. It also includes some temporary construction easements. And some of these easements are absolutely necessary. Some of them we could, we could do without if we have to. And so we'll, we'll keep that in mind as we pursue the easements. Normally, with this kind of a magnitude of easement acquisition program, we'd hire a consultant. In this case, we're going to do the work in-house to save money, but that'll still require some technical support services for, for that, this part of the project. This next slide tells you, shows the strategic priority we're addressing with the project. It also shows you some of the need for the project. That one on the left, there is a sewer line where a drainage structure was built around the sewer line. That's pretty unusual and you can see a repair clamp there on the sewer line. The other two are just a couple of the brick manholes and you can see the deterioration that happens over the years.
The picture on the left is a repair clamp on that sewer line?
Yes, sir.
Looks like somebody wrapped belts around it?
Well, and that's what a repair clamp looks like. It's, that's actually a waterline repair clamp. But it's got, those are, it kind of looks like an auto hose clamp.
Yeah.
Where you screw it tighter, but it's got, depending on the size of the line, you know, four to, to a dozen clamps that you tighten or that you screw tighter. And these, if you could see these manholes during a rain event, sometimes, you know, it's like a shower. Water's just pouring in. So that's part of what we do when we replace these brick manholes is eliminate some infiltration and, and inflow to the system. As far as budget and funding, there are sufficient funds available in the water, wastewater capital fund. And so we're requesting a total of approximately eighty-one thousand additional funding plus contingency, which will include, I'll hit the second and third bullet first. So that's a market appraisal report to assess the value of the easements that we need to collect, to acquire. And then a task order with Keystone for surveying and for writing legal descriptions for us to use in communicating and negotiating with property owners. And then the top item is ninety-eight hundred dollars for an amendment with our consulting engineer and I'll go back and show you. Here in the map in the bottom right, during the early phases of the project, as we were working with the Water Utilities Department, they identified an area near, just north of Twelfth Avenue with insignificant disrepair. And because of the stage of the project, we were able to add that on to the scope of the engineer. So that's what this ninety-eight hundred dollar portion of the project or the authorization is for. Here I have, I'd be glad to try to answer any questions and we have the, the recommendations on the screen or in your report.
Trustees, any questions for Bill? Doesn't sound like we have any questions. It's nice that we have people who know what they're doing with sewer lines. Councillors, do you need either recommendations or is there a motion on this item? Or trustees, excuse me?
Motion to authorize, motion to authorize General Manager to execute Contract Amendment One at a fee of nine thousand eight hundred dollars for design of Twelfth Avenue Sewer Segment for a new total contract fee with RJN of two hundred and ninety-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Authorize General Manager to execute Task Order One with Keystone Engineering at a fee of sixty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-two cents. Authorize staff to execute an agreement with Mile, with Milestone Valuation at a fee of five thousand. Authorize a total project expenditures of four hundred and five thousand, which includes contingency, design permitting, bidding, construction administration services and easement acquisition services and approve the related budget amendment.
A motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation on this project. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, those items are approved.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Lauren Smith on the approval of a bid award to Sherman and Riley for purchase of puller tensioners for the electric distribution.
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. During the issue meeting on March first, the trustees authorized expenditures for the purchase of equipment for the Distribution Division of the Electric Department. Amongst the approved items were two wire puller tensioner units that required public bidding. Bit solicitations were prepared and advertised in accordance with the city purchasing manual and one bid was received and opened on March thirty-first. Sherman Riley met all the bid specifications, making them the lowest responsible bidder. I have a recommended motion here, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if they're worthy.
Trustees, any questions?
You feel confident with Sherman and Riley? Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks. You feel competent in Sherman and Riley as far as being a competent? Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
What is your recommendation, Lauren?
I've recommended motion to award bid to Sherman Riley in the amount of two hundred and sixty-three thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and authorize expenditures up to two hundred and seventy-four thousand. That includes some contingency.
Trustees?
Motion to approve Lauren's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this bid award. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that bid award is approved. Takes us to item five C, an overview of the proposed distributed generation rate tariff as proposed in Resolution twenty twenty-one dash four. Mr. Smith?
Good evening again. During the last SUA meeting, Ellen Vedder Consulting presented the newly designed distributed generation rate. Based on the results of a lengthy public outreach and education program, the recommended DG rate structure is net energy metering with a fixed service availability fee. Ellen Vedder and staff have designed a state-of-the-art rate based off our latest cost of service study that ensures all of our customers are treated equitably, addresses cross-subsidization issues, and directly correlates to feedback we receive from our customers. The resolution for this new rate is on the agenda for trustee consideration, and no action is required at this point, but more at the resolution. And I'm here to answer any questions. Lisa Vedder with Ellen Vedder is here to answer questions, should you have any.
Thank you, Lauren. Trustees?
This is such a complicated topic. It's been, I've learned so much as we've gone through it and from the consultant that's helping us, from the community members that are supporting from a task force perspective. It's, it's a lot to digest and understand with a lot of language that isn't in my normal vocabulary, so I appreciate all the work that's been done. I wonder, Lauren, if you were able to hear Mr. Wahara's comments earlier, and if you have any additional comments that you might provide.
Sure, sure. I really appreciate his comments. You know, in order for staff to fully review Mr. Wahara's information and provide a formal response, we anticipate an additional six thousand dollars in consultant fees, as well as significant staff time. Keeping in mind that we have spent approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars at this point for this campaign in consulting fees, not to mention staff time. As mentioned above, we have hired a professional consulting firm with over thirty years of experience. We have received public input regarding their desire to have a net metering rate with a fixed service availability fee that addresses cross-subsidization and is easy to administer and understand. The proposed new rate addresses all these points. And so really, we would like some guidance from the trustees. If you would like us to continue down this path, vetting out, you know, I heard several inconsistencies, but we really need time to, to, to study what he has proposed to come back and either dispute or discuss his, the information he's provided.
Lauren, one of his specific comments was around sort of the, the break-even point or this idea that if a distributed generation, distributed generation customer doesn't generate any power at above five hundred nineteen kilowatt hours, they're actually paying less than someone who's not on a DG system. That seems like an issue. I mean, what, what is your response to that specific?
You, you bet. I can let Lisa chime in, but I will start with, we've included language that you have to have a minimum of a two-kilowatt installed system to, to, to be on the tariff. And so we've also, you know, countered that with language that says if your system isn't operating correctly o- over a certain period of time, that you must address it or we'll put you back on the reg, or that you're subject to go back to the regional retail rate. And so Lisa, do you have any more to add to that?
Just to remind everybody, good evening. Nice to see you all again. So basically, the, the way the service availability fee works is it is set to recover the fixed cost of having that customer on the system, the fixed distribution and production costs, bearing in mind that the production cost includes all GRDA's fixed costs of having dams and power plants and transmission lines. So we designed it around the average customer. So Mr. Wahara is correct that customers at the either extreme end could be either harmed or get benefits. We, as, as Lauren suggested, tried to, you know, include aspects into the tariff to take care of that. We based the tariff on the current behavior of actual customers, recognizing that if people start behaving badly, we would introduce probably a tiered service availability fee. We didn't see the need to complicate the tariff at this point, given there's so few customers on the tariff right now, and they all seem to be in the general average vicinity. The reason that we're using the wholesale rate is because we're, in theory, collecting the fixed cost associated with that customer. So by using a retail level rate or anything more than the wholesale rate, you would run into the danger of double dipping, if you will.
Thank you. Do you feel like in your work in designing the tariff, that there was any information or data that you were not able to include that you feel like would have been helpful for you to have in designing the rate in the first place?
No, I think, I think it's, I think it's a great, you know, as, any, anytime you change rate structure, as you well know, now this is the third time with the distributed generation rate.
Yes.
It's always a pilot. It's always best to, to recognize that you're probably going to have to revisit the rate in twelve to eighteen months to, to see how people are behaving, because rates are signals to a market that get people to act a certain way. So once people, you know, start, you know, acting the way they're going to act, then you take that data and actually use it to revise what you're doing if needed. If people continue to behave the way they have, there shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you.
I do think that's something unique in this particular rate structure in that there's the potential for a very changed behavior as a result, right? So we could be helping to incentivize in some way or help along this idea of solar. Whereas with other rate structures, I think you don't necessarily have that component to it. And so the idea, I mean, I think we've learned through all the rate structure conversations and cost of service conversations that we've had across utilities that looking at these rate structures and understanding cost of service more often is important. But I think that concept that she just spoke about is just, is kind of an interesting concept here that maybe, maybe that constant change in, in policies and, you know, as Henri was saying, is, can be challenging, but maybe it's not inappropriate here because we could see shifts in consumer behavior based on this policy.
In which case, it would be more appropriate to reexamine what the rate structure is.
Right. And it wouldn't seem flighty as much as it is just prudent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the, the other issue for me in this discussion is just that, you know, there's, the, the analysis that Mr. Wahara has provided is very in-depth and quite detailed, and I certainly appreciate that, but it's also an analysis based on numbers and not necessarily an analysis based on the real, full real-world application of, of what this looks like. And given that we have someone here who, who does this for a living and, and has provided that also, that other context outside of just looking at, at the charts, I think is a decent enough reason to say this makes sense in that context. And you're right, I mean, we will, we will have to look and sort of see how it, you know, the world changes a lot in the next twelve to eighteen months in terms of distributed generation and who adopts it, who doesn't, and how it's going, and what new technology is available. And I don't think there's any way for us to get off the, you know, off that si- cycle of having to readjust as things change. And so I, I don't love doing that. I'm, I'm not super excited that we're having this conversation right now anyway. But, you know, we have to, we have to stay abreast of, of the circumstances, so.
I think this is a topic too, just like we were talking about transportation, there's potential for deeper pockets of federal funding to incentivize perhaps this kind of infrastructure. So we might see more people take it up for that reason. So I just, I do think the more that I am exposed to the conversation and kind of think about this topic, we're ultimately probably going to have to look at it more often, just because it is a kind of emerging market here in our, in our state. I mean, in other states, maybe not so much, but.
Yeah. And I think this gets us the goal. One of the goals of this was the fact that the buy-all, sell-all was actively disincentivizing people from, from installing, and this, this gives, fixes that problem to a large degree and at least gets us out of the active disincentive and gets us into more of what we're hoping to see. And yeah, it may need to change some more at some point, but. Anything further from Lauren or Lisa?
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. Appreciate you being here. Counselors, any further discussion on item five C before we move to the resolution? Trustees, I mean, you'd think after three years plus, I'd get that. All right, well, we'll jump to six A, Resolution SUA twenty twenty-one dash four, a resolution adopting a net energy metering distributed generation rate. Further discussion here, or is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number SUA twenty twenty-one dash four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Resolution SUA twenty twenty-one dash four is adopted. Any reports from the officers or the board? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Chair Zanotti.
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake.
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski.
Yes.
Trustee Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority is now adjourned. At this time, I will reconvene the Stillwater City Council meeting. We are at item thirteen on the agenda. Is there a motion to enter executive session for the purposes stated on the agenda?
Motion to enter executive session.
Second.
With a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Zanotti.
Yes.
Counselor Redlake.
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski.
Yes.
Counselor Hawkins.
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, we'll now enter executive session. Thank you all.